Question record.
Absolutely, sir. Alright, please rise to the flag, hand of your heart, veterans make salute, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the great republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, in thy name I swear.
Roll call. Director Rooney?
Here.
Director Gregory?
Here.
Director Powell Fox? Do you receive anything, Rob, from your home?
Not yet.
Okay. Director Cowan?
Here.
Present, same surface?
Present.
Alright.
And we are recording.
We are recording.
My motion to approve this special meeting agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And you want to post? Hearing none, passes four, zero with one absence. Go to number seven, Ashley.
Oh, is there any public comment for items not on the agenda?
I don't know.
Okay. So we'll move on to the work session items, item number one.
Excellent. Alright, so this is part of our strategic master planning for the district. This is our third meeting of probably several. This portion will be mostly focused on the fire department. This plan basically gathered information about our current operations, the history of the current operations, and where we project we're going to go in the future and our needs that we'll have. And some of it after, some of it will inspire discussion. So this is a group interactive death by PowerPoint presentation.
My favorite.
Yeah, but no, I left spots in here encouraging comments, questions, ideas. This isn't the like full master plan, this is what we're doing, this has everybody's input so that we're all on the same page and we're working together. You guys may identify things or questions that I wasn't able to think of or Scott wasn't able to think of. And I tried to check all the boxes and look at everything that would affect the district. I've gone over the PowerPoint with them a couple of times and there's some things in here. I use averages and have some explanations in there to give you an idea of kind of what stimulates what we have to do and why. So we can get started, he's just gonna walk in whenever.
Yeah, I just texted him, see if he's up.
Okay, so this right here is gonna, the master plan, it's the ideas and we'll focus on a couple of things. So the first thing we're gonna talk about in the master plan. Goals and objectives, identify the current and future needs of the fire department. So it's gonna give us an outline of the direction we're going and the ideas of how we're gonna get there. So we got, we haven't charted path. Overview of the fire department's current operational function and the future. So what are we doing now, what do we need to be doing in the future? It identifies the needs to maintain those operations so that we don't fall short and we're not able to keep up with what's required of us, we'll look at that. It establishes a timeframe to achieve these planned goals. So if we want to accomplish something, we can't just put it out there. I like what Anthony said the other day where we have our board where we put our ideas on there and that's where they go to die. So we're not doing that, this is basically gonna set us up and how we're gonna get there. So we're gonna identify the financial needs and establish the financial accountability so that when we plan something, we have it planned out not only in operations but a revenue source and how that's gonna take place so that we're not building something that's beyond our abilities and we're not cutting ourselves short. So the first thing we'll just take a look at, these are the key points that we want to focus on. First part will be the fire department history, then we'll go into the additional bullet points as we move forward. At the end of each highlighted bullet point, we'll have a discussion. So under the fire department history. San Miguel was established December 24th, 1888, we know that because of this article and because San Miguel burned down on December 25th, 1888. And so they had established, actually San Miguel was established a hundred years prior. So it took them a hundred years to get a organized fire department here.
Wow.
And then they were a day short. Okay, the fire department has been housed in several facilities throughout the years. One of the prior locations was on South 13th Street between L Street and Mission, just west of the alley. This facility right here is where they discovered the old wagon and they said it ran out of there before. The 1940s facility that was built in somewhere around 4243. And it is on the southwest corner of 13th and L Street, so it made sense. And Gid was our guy that said, well, I remember it here and they said it came from over there. So that's where that information came from. Right across the street in that empty alley from Pablo's, next to the alley, was a site for the fire station as well at one time, but he didn't know and I can't find anything that says when that happened, but it's just a point of interest. Alright, the administrative offices have moved several times over the years. So whoever basically was running the department in the past basically did it out of their home. In 2000, this facility was developed by a grant for about $200,000 and they constructed this and it was designed for a fire department. After it was built, the CSD was formed in 2001 and they decided to put the CSD in here temporarily. So that'll give you an idea where that went. So this is one of the reasons we want to do a master plan. This is one of the reasons why we want to continue on and pursue, set our goals. So do we have any questions about history or comments?
That very first building?
Yes.
Is that one, that bluish one, is that one still there? Is it still up?
The, yeah, it's actually, go to Pablo's, turn left on 13th and right behind his place is the alley. That next building, the 10 building right there is where they said they housed fire equipment. That's where the ladder wagon was found back in there. So that was before the 40s. Now, it may have only been there a short period of time because
Two people came out.
There was a building across the street. So the historian just walked in.
Just has the history card.
Slider.
Why is it making her?
Yes. Yes. Can you see him?
So, any other, any other questions? So real quick, we just did a quick history on the department, where it came from and what it was doing and where we're at today.
Okay.
So, and I got the information from you, so. Yeah, okay. Okay. The next part here, we're gonna just talk about personnel. The district is covered by an on-duty officer who is committed to responding to emergency calls for a 24-hour period. So right now, myself, Scott cover those positions and then we trade off and once in a while, we have one of our volunteers who's committed to covering it and for some reason him and I are not available. This model, you know, we have to have somebody guaranteed to respond 24/7/365. So when we get dispatched, we don't go as an unanswered call. That can be really bad for our boot calling and really bad for the district's reputation and we don't, we don't want to go there. So like I said, myself and Scott are covering most of that and then we talk more about the additional coverage. Additional emergency response personnel are on-call and respond by a page based on their availability. So we have the 18 members have pagers and now we're also dispatched by our cell phones through an app that the county sends a dispatch out and it gives us the information. And so we can't determine if they're available or not until we actually get the call and then when they respond. So we do guarantee that one person's responding to a call, but we can't guarantee more than that. And that's why we also have a master mutual aid plan with Camp Roberts Mutual Aid Agreement and with the county. And the county has parameters where when it's a medical, then we come up and respond, they don't send any additional resources. If it is a vehicle accident, they'll send an additional engine and an overhead person, a chief officer. If it's a structured fire, then they send two engines, a chief officer, say an air unit and then if we request a ladder truck. Those are automatically on the dispatch. So if a fire comes in right now and they say there's a structured fire, we will get those additional resources until we call them off. So we'll get Camp Roberts, us, and then two engines, a chief, an air unit, and possibly a truck if we want it. A second alarm fire, all that means is they repeat the first dispatch and that would be a chief officer, two additional engines, and maybe three, three engines, not necessarily another ladder truck or a air unit. But being out here and being a rural, they'll probably send a water tender as well. So personnel, and we have one chief position, a chief, assistant fire chief position and prevention officer. We have on-call three captain positions. We have three engineer positions, those are also on-call volunteers, and then 12 on-call firefighter positions. Currently, we have 16 of the 20 positions filled. And some of those positions can be from trainees to someone that's been on the department for a few years. So what we get responding isn't necessarily somebody that's been around. We might get two people that have only been around six months, eight years and only have, or I'm sorry, six months to a year and only have variable experience. So Fire Tooth has administrative duties, personnel, timekeeping and payroll, policies and procedures, response documentation, so we document our calls, department, budget, finance, training schedule, duty coverage for emergency responses, participates in county chiefs' meetings and participates in county train officer meetings. And Scott and I share those responsibilities. The assistant chief position assists with administrative duties and the department documentation, state reporting, company training, duty coverage, emergency response, assists with equipment services and maintenance and applies for grants. So some of those are the things that on a daily basis, depending on what it is, he goes after. As a prevention officer, building plan review, building inspection review, some of that requires a rough-in inspection, final inspection, so it's more than one inspection on a given construction site. So new construction inspections encompass more than just one. Fire sprinkler inspection, multi-occupancy building inspections, so if you have apartment complexes, mixed occupancy, things like that may require fire inspection for insurance purposes and Scott would be responsible to do that. Code enforcement documentation, so when we have illegal traders or we have issues that violate codes, we can go out and document it and pursue building department or code enforcement, things like that to ensure that we try to keep those things down. Annual program in October is Fire Safety Month, so we do Fire Prevention Month. It's a group effort here, so we reach out to the school. We try to host three classes up there that go from kindergarten to eighth grade, especially before COVID. And we teach them fire safety techniques and that program is supported by our firefighters association as well as fire prevention in our budget. Student education for fire safety could be here as well, not just at the school. So we'll reach out, sometimes we have boy scout, girl scouts, other groups that come in and they want to see the fire station and we teach them stop robbing the whole things like that. Public education, we send out flyers with the bills periodically. Like right now, we'd send one out for weed abatement. We send one out just of earthquake awareness. We send one out during the winter time, Christmas, about Christmas trees, things like that. Weed abatement, we've gone around and done our community lot assessments, send out notifications where weeds need to be abated and then we'll do follow-ups and encourage them to cut their weeds or get them cut. And then ones that we find aren't compliant, that meet the criteria, we actually have them abated and then that abatement cost is turned over to, on their tax and we get reimbursed for it. Business inspections, anybody in business requires inspections, that would be another thing. And then daycare inspections are specific because of kids being in there. Those have to be done on a regular basis as well. So investigations, we both participate in that. Investigate an incident, investigate to determine the cause, in origin of a fire. Again, that's preventative, so it doesn't happen again in the future. We invest, the investigation report, documentation of it, a lot of times insurance companies need that information. We work with other departments that work with us together and we'll help them as well. Participate in the Slow Fist Team for Investigations, it's a group that all departments participate in and it's kind of like, you know, we're gonna go help them and they're gonna help us in mutual aid system and that way there's no additional cost to calling out an outside investigator because some incidences require a specific knowledge. Say it was, say it was a bomb or something, we would have to get a bomb technician type person to come in and really look something over like that. Okay, so we have 18 call, pay call firefighters, they respond to emergency calls on an on-call basis. Perform periodic work details as needed, so in our budget, we've worked out a certain amount of hours and now we're aware of how many hours we have in order to accomplish certain things. Maintenance on the station, equipment, setting up for training drills, basic cleaning housework that's more than just cleanup during our training time, but something that would require more than just a little effort. So we provided that and then they have to attend weekly fire department training drills. And also they'll help perform fuel management, so some areas in the district and even district property, we'll go out and weed eat and do our weed abatement as well. So the personnel costs, and you look at it in the form of, so in 2020, we had 331 calls and we'll look at more of that as we go. But I add up, after every call, there's a run sheet. On this run sheet, we mark who responds to it at the end of the call. Those go into a box at the end of the month that collect the calls, account the calls, the type of call, who responded and how many. So I know who was on the call and who was on standby. In 2020, after adding up all the calls, and let's say it was 30 calls that month and 90 people responded, you know, you're gonna get your average of three people per call. So in the instance of a structured fire, let's say we had nine people there, but on a medical aid, we had our one-duty officer respond. So that averages it out. On average, the pay is 1440 per call, which turns out to be per hour. So the numbers here are basically the base cost. If the call ran more than an hour or something like that, obviously it's gonna make that number go up. But based on the 3.3 and the 1440, each call was around $47 just for personnel response.
Robert, if you have a response, are the people being paid for at least one hour? In other words, is it?
Yes.
20-minute call?
Correct, and the reason that is, so you're at home having dinner with your family and they respond down here and the pager goes off. We base it from the time the page goes out on the run sheet until we close the call on the run sheet. And they get the first hour and then after that, we count each hour that we go into.
Okay.
So the 47.45 to that's after, that's a 3.3.
Yeah, 3.3 by times a 1440. There's different people, different pay ranges depending on their rank here. But when I averaged it out, it was basically counting how large percentage are at the 1440 per hour and it's based off the minimum wage and our calculator of 1.1% of minimum wage. And so that sets that. So now, we had a call with more than three, obviously it costs more unless this is an average.
What about after you factor in insurance and all the other stuff?
Um, this is based on calls, we'll get more into that in the finance portion of it because I divide it by the overall expense.
Got it.
Okay, so the district pays out $45 on our agreement with county on dispatch. We don't have no control over that really. They basically take theirs and they set a cost and they divide it by the number of calls they run and they bill each department that's contracted with them based on that, so it's right around $45. That number can go up and down just a little bit, but it's averaged also. So basically, they only charge us for district calls. When we go outside the district for those other calls, that's assisting them, there's no charge to us. So out of the 260, we paid 11,700 just for our district calls. So if you add the, the average on the 27, 429 based on the 3.3 and the 11, then you get the 27, 429, 12. Now that is like the bottom and there'll be reasons for that number to go up, but that's where we're at when we're doing our budget and then we can factor in the other factors that influence that number. And going forward, some of the things we'll talk about in the master plan and having the coverage so that we have personnel available and the times we have them available, that number will become very important because then we can kind of forecast based on our call numbers and that number of 3.3 and that's what will, will know where we're at. So some of the needs, we need to continue focusing on staffing, always recruiting and training. We want to maintain that personnel, that average personnel per call. So when we see it, if it starts dropping below three and I get in the twos or the 2.5, I mean, that's average, that means I got calls a lot that only one person's responding and technically that's really not enough. And that is what stimulates the thought about coverage and personnel and how we do that because we are set up with the design to have one person recall to every call so that we don't have a call go unanswered. But when you start talking about performing on a call and providing the service, it's dangerous for one person to be out there by themselves and we know we got other people coming right now to a point. But for instance, Camp Roberts is gonna put now 5,000 people up there supposedly and it's going to change the dynamics of their availability to respond. There's a lot of talk up there with the command and how that works out. We always have county fire responding, but are you gonna wait for somebody coming to target? That's what we're doing. So you know, it's potential, somebody could be here for 15 minutes to 20 minutes maybe without that person. So these are the things that we have to consider and that's why I just wanted to give you guys these things. Continue to recruit new firefighters is always ongoing. Continue to develop a duty officer coverage position. We'd like to establish, recognize more formal position in that. It doesn't have to be a specific person, it just has to be a specific position so there's dedicated times when that position would be filled. So it could be filled by people that are available. It doesn't, in other words, require like full-time person with benefits and those type of things. But it would require acknowledgement and a budget planning to have that funded.
In the old times, I guess, we used to have CSD employees who would also be part of the fire staff. And does that still happen or is that?
No, we can't necessarily guarantee that. I mean, if they voiced the opinion they wanted to, there was a lot of questions and things that came along with that. I mean, at first, when Kelly and David were here and then when Phil Tucson, a couple other people came through, they worked at the district and they responded as well. And got to the point, we separated out their response from their job just like if somebody worked at the market and responded there at the school and responded down there. So yeah, they could and yeah, probably would benefit us, but now that the sewer plant and the operations of the utility department is busier, they're not necessarily always that available and it requires a lot of time on their part to meet what we do is being qualified. And none of them have expressed interest in that area. So right now, the three employees we have in the utility department are not part of the fire.
You volunteering, Anthony?
One thing we can do is pursue a safer grant for firefighters for weekly staffing. We're gonna pursue that and see if we can get staffing in 2021. A safer grant is a limited time, usually it's two years. I don't know if they base it off what we provide them, if there's only a certain amount that they recommend. I would imagine it would be under whatever model that we propose to them on a salary range level and knowing that it's a limited term, so if the grant goes away, the position goes away. And then we would get somebody to apply for it and it would be paid for by that grant and that would be a permanent intermittent, I would say intermittent because if the grant goes away, they do, but they would be here on a schedule and I'll talk more about that. Develop funding for the staff on a intermittent, part-time or seasonal basis, ongoing until secured, established 2023, 2223. So another thing we take a look at, we'll look at our call volume and when it's high, when it's low, when to kind of focus on, to put the staffing if we were to use it so that we're getting the biggest bang for our buck. And part of that would be, well, like seasonal positions. Our numbers pick up May through November 1st. So that would be a targeted time to have somebody on during the day, like a five-day-a-week person. Because we pretty much have people available more on the weekends and after hours. So the idea would be to have somebody here, say, you know, eight to five type thing and then they would be able to respond to calls, but then do some of the other things that we've done as well and we'll talk about that. So now let's talk about personnel questions. You got any, any other comments on it?
I have, I have a couple of questions. What is the average response time for a volunteer to come down here and respond to a call?
That's a good question, on the average, so we get our page and for instance, when I get the page, I'm on radio, I come up as soon as I'm responding, so it looks like a minute or two. The ones that respond here to the station can be up to four minutes. We try to beat the four-minute mark. Full-time departments have a set mark that they have to be responding outside the door, which is less than that. Do you remember?
Three minutes.
So they're like at a three-minute mark. We'll get repaged if we don't answer a page, it's probably after like five minutes. So it doesn't go too long and they'll run a second page for us and then like a third page and at least until we get a unit on scene. And then if we don't answer after the second page, they start an additional unit from San Luis County.
And then how long would it take to respond to a call in the dis, like once we're in the vehicle rolling or is it like?
It's across the terrace, it may be up to three minutes. Everything on this side is probably under two minutes.
Okay.
Yeah, in the district.
Do I know that the longer it takes to respond to a call, like on, was it cardiac arrest? Is it under 10 minutes that the person has?
Well, yeah, we.
I don't wanna give you the details.
After six minutes of not breathing, you're gonna have brain death. After 10, every minute after cardiac arrest, you lose 10% of ability to be revived. So do the math, 10 minutes, you're 100% coming back.
And the last question I have is, in majority of our calls, what percent would you say are medical versus fire related?
It's right now, we're like 73%. You have that number on there? So I put that number.
I think it was 68%.
Yeah, I put that number in every, every month's report. So it runs in that range. Our, most of our cars, calls are medical calls. Our ambulance responses are always in between 10 to 15 minutes before they arrive on scene. And actually, that's probably, probably 15 to 20 minutes because we're on scene sometimes 10 minutes before they get here. Our nearest ambulances are located two in Paso Robles, one in Templeton, two in Tascadero. And the two, one in Tascadero, one in Paso are day car units, so they're not 24-hour units. At night, it's only one.
Oh wow, okay.
Rob, for public, just so you guys know, it's an informal work session, so you can ask questions.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, yeah, this, this, you guys can ask questions and chime in anytime you'd like as well.
Anytime you want.
Any other questions on personnel?
So you said that you have 16 out of 20, so you are actively?
We're always actively recruiting, right, you know. We met a thing where we extended, we extended our boundaries to try to get, encourage people to apply. And we did, but we found that the people too far away, it got too many people too far. And we did, but we found that the people too far away, it got too many people too far away and not enough people local. So as those people left, I encouraged no more outside the area. You got to live inside our mutual aid response area to even apply. And then most of them are right here in the district. And we've had some pretty good luck this last year. We got a pretty good set of solid individuals that are really motivated, showing up, participating. Scott's put them through a lot of hoops and they responded really well to it. But we're still always in need of more volunteers. For me, you know, if we filled the bill with all 20, that would be perfect. And you know, it's just hard to get, people show up, they're really motivated. You see them for two months and you think they're really motivated and then they disappear and we don't know why. But it's just, you know, life happens. You know, and then usually we get a younger person who's living in a parent's house and they go off to school or they get a job and they move and things like that. So there's so many variables in it that make that number change. But we're constantly always looking and trying to recruit. Okay, move on. Okay, fire department over you. We're going to look at the emergency responses. Hopefully this will answer some of those questions, Anthony. Okay, so all-risk department meeting, there's no emergency we don't respond to where sometimes, you know, you have an engine 30 and they have rescue 30. It only responds to rescues or medical medics only respond to squads, only go on certain calls. So here, we answer the call to everything and if we can't handle it, we call a resource that does help us. For instance, a rescue or hazardous materials or a ladder truck, currently a water tender, things like that. And we had 331 of those calls and 271 were inside the district this year. Oh, here we go. We had 260 that were inside. So that 78% of our calls are in the district. There were 71 mutual aid calls. We went outside our district and that was 21% of the time. We assisted Camp Roberts with 13 calls, that's only 4%, but this last year was really low because of COVID. Typically, we're in there about 30-something times a year. And we went out there like 25 or six times just for bed fires. And that's where we're going into. By June, July and August, we'll probably be pretty busy out there. And it all depends on how much function they're having out there with their operations as military moves around out there. We had four OES responses this last year. They were out 38 days total and they had $193,253.75 revenue in just 2020. But the year prior to that, we didn't go out at all. And it just depends on where the calls are, the availability of responders, when they call and how we get dispatched. One of those things I anticipate will change because there's a new chief in the county office. We used to have a rotation on the dispatch basis, so we kind of knew when we would be up or not.